All right, time is 7:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the October edition of the Columbia School Board meeting. I'll start with a roll call, please.
Norina's absent tonight. Adam Hemken?
Here.
Andrew Corey?
Here.
Kelly Moyer?
Here.
Greg Meyer?
Here.
Lisa Schumacher?
Here.
Tyson Surge?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Everybody would stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, well, we don't have any visitors tonight, so welcome to everyone that's tuned in through YouTube. Appreciate you joining us this evening. So, we don't have any visitors in-house again. We're going to start right into it with the, our public hearing, so...
This would be our BINA hearing.
BINA hearing, okay.
BINA hearing, and this is for the sales of bonds. We're intending to sell 10 to 11 million dollars in bonds for the construction renovation at the high school. This will be to get us started and will be structured based on the estimated monies we'll need to complete the project. One of the key things that we talked about with the, the sales of these bonds that I want to point out is, one, as the bonds that we had passed or fall off, we want to bring these new bonds on without increasing the tax rate. We want to keep that level, if not drop it a little bit. The second thing is, is that we are going to try and take advantage of arbitrage, and the first 10 million, if you do under 10 million in bonds, you don't have to worry about a timeline on arbitrage, which is good news. So, this will be the first selling of bonds, and then we will structure the future sellings of bonds when we've got a clearer picture of how much we need, and do that so that, again, the tax rate stays nice and level and we don't lose all of the opportunities that we're getting with this. So, questions, comments on the sales of the bonds? I will...
And just for the public who's watching, arbitrage is basically where we can borrow money cheaper than we can invest it, so the district would benefit from the funds. We actually make money on the money while we're waiting for the construction to begin, so, yes, kind of different concept. Well, we have no public, so I have no questions. Any questions from the board? All right, and at that I entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Andrea, a second?
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Kelly?
Thank you, Kelly. All right, a roll call, please.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
Andrew Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Surge?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. Now, we'll start with our scheduled school board meeting, and we will call that to order at 7:03 PM. And we need to check, do another roll call, make sure nobody snuck out.
Adam Hemken?
Here.
Andrew Corey?
Here.
Kelly Moyer?
Here.
Greg Meyer?
Here.
Lisa Schumacher?
Here.
Here.
All right, we're still here, that's good. Didn't lose anybody in three minutes. All right, we don't have any visitors again in public or in person. Welcome everyone online. Correspondence, any correspondence? No correspondence this time? All right, move right on to our consent agenda. If you'd like to walk us through that.
Yeah, this being October, there's very little. You've got, of course, your financial statements and your minutes of previous meetings. We have two individuals to hire. Michael Goomensheimer is a custodian and Fred Wagner is a bus driver. We are always looking for more custodians and bus drivers and subs of those non-certified. But with that, that's really it. So, administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Perfect. Any questions, concerns, comments? Does that entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tyson, give her a second.
I'll second.
Lisa seconds, roll call, please.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
Andrew Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Surge?
Yes.
Perfect, passing unanimously. We'll go into our communication reports and presentations. The enrollment report is in your packet. Make sure you think significant of that, and we'll go right into our building administrative reports, starting with the building.
Hi, that's me. So, I'm Mrs. Bedard, I'm the assistant principal here at CHS. So, if you look up, I have some slides for you guys. At the end of September, beginning of October, we basically have our biggest event of the year, which is homecoming. If, you see the, on the picture over there of the band Drumline, last year, we started a tradition where at the end of our games, the Drumline kind of walks everyone out and plays and everything. It actually is now our second year that we've done it, so we're trying to make it a tradition to include the band there during homecoming games. The kids thought it was great and even busted out their electric slide that they do typically at the end of basketball games before they walked out of the school. If you see in the middle picture, we have our staff members there. So, one of our games that we always end with is the tug-of-war game, and our seniors won this year, so they beat out freshmen all the way through juniors and everything, but then we surprise them with a staff tug-of-war, and the staff luckily won. Just barely, but they won. And then, one of our biggest traditions during homecoming had, that we always start off with, is our hallway decorations. So, our theme this year was Hollywood. All the hallways looked fantastic, the seniors did, mamma mia, it was very beautiful, but I wanted to highlight the juniors. They did Top Gun, one of my favorite movies, so, but they had a nice runway, they had airplanes and everything, so that's a nice little tradition that we always do. And then, they spend nice time cleaning that up at the end of the week, too, so thank you for all those students who came out. At the very bottom, we have our Fight for Like an Eagle. This was our Breast Cancer Awareness Month is October, so our volleyball team and our student council raised over $1,000 that we ended up donating to the Breast Cancer Awareness Society. So, we thank volleyball and student council for doing that. In the middle picture, we have Ms. McGinty and our choir. They ended up going to the St. Louis Cardinals stadium where they sang the National Anthem or "God Bless America," one of the two, but they had a nice little field trip out there. They did a wonderful job. And Ms. McGinty and the choir team, as well as band, just recently went ahead and had their tryouts for Jazz Festival and everything like that, and I believe we have several students anywhere from four to five that actually qualified for the festival, so we're really excited for them. And then, at the end, we just have some shout-outs with our sports teams. Jacob Hall and Avery Allen, they, sorry, Arendelle, made it to Gulf State this year, so that was really exciting for both of them. In soccer, right now, actually, it happened tonight, it was supposed to happen last night, was their regional championship, and darkness kind of went out, and so, we played overtime today out at Father McGinty, and they won in penalty kicks. So, our boys are regional champions this year, and they will be starting sectionals in Murphysboro on Saturday at 1:00. Our volleyball team, I just got text updates from our athletic director who's out in Freeburg. He said freshman just currently won against Freeburg in three sets. Our JV has won the first set, they're still playing JV right now, and so, they were winning 15-14 against Freeburg. varsity, of course, hasn't started, but their regional play starts, so our playoff series for the state series starts October 22nd, and then, Cost Country this Saturday is also going to be in Highland. We have very good hopes for Mr. Ethan Hogan. He just won his conference for us. We have some lovely ladies that are also doing very well in that series, so we have high hopes for Cost Country as well. And then, I just wanted to give another shout-out to Ethan, who currently, I think about two weeks ago, signed with the University of North Carolina to continue his running career out there. So, we're very proud of that young man. If you go to the next slide, I have more of the educational going on here. If you look into that corner, we have four of our students and Mr. Jermaine that are proudly displayed out here. Every month, we do Staff and Student of the Month. Our character trait was purpose, so those young students over there, one, because of their purpose and their goals in life and where they're going, and then, Mr. Jermaine, we did a shout-out because of all the help. He's one staff member that truly bleeds blue, and so, he got the staff spotlight as well for that month. If you look at that lovely display of Ms. Bedard and Eastern Illinois University, our college, it was College Application Month this month, and so, our counselors have put fantastic videos out there, and to support going to college, we put every teacher, every counselor, every aide out there on, displayed what college they're going to, so every day they walked into a classroom, they were seeing the different colleges that we've all gone to. And then, lastly, yesterday was October 18th, we had a very large group. It's probably our largest group that we've had recently that took the PSAT and the NSQT, which is basically the National Merit Scholarship Program test. So, we had 39 sophomores and 64 juniors take it, so sometimes, we've just closed down a classroom, our study hall room for it, and this year, we actually had to bring everyone into the gym because we had such a large group taking it. And we also just got some notice about the group that took it last year. We have Mr. Noah Boyer Edwards, who is now a semifinalist. He's competing for actually one of these scholarships, so we're very proud of him. And then, we have Lane Elbers, who got her scores back, and she's recognized for a commendable score as, and which is known as a commendable student. So, congratulations to those two students of ours. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Awesome. Perfect. Well, appreciate the building update and sports update, too, so...
Mm-hmm.
All right, and we'll move on to our assistant superintendent reports.
So, I want to be back on for Amanda's real quick. So, when they took the test yesterday, it was the first time that we've given this online. The college board is pushing to take SAT, PSAT, all of that will be on, an online test now, which like the elementary students take the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And so, it was, there was some learning curves to go along with it, but the counselors, the administrators, and, but especially the students that took that test, did a fantastic job with switching up a format on them all of a sudden with that. So, just give them an extra shout-out. This month, kind of my highlights are Kelly Search at Eagleview and Erica Kane at Parkview. Our two of the teachers that are piloting are Horton-Gillingham Reading Program this year. Like I said, we have several teachers that went over the summer to get trained. There are two of them. Kelly is really taking the lead with first grade and doing a lot of the planning, getting it organized for the team so that all of the first grade teachers that are piloting in it are on the same page and have everything that they need. Erica Kane is doing it in second grade, and she has been great with coming and being, communicating with me a lot about what's going well, what she's struggling with, what do they still need, so that we can keep tweaking it. We are working with Jen Hall at Waterloo, and we are actually sending four teachers on Monday and eight teachers in November to go do some observations at, in Waterloo, that they've been implementing it for a while, and so, now that our teachers have been trained, they can kind of go see it in action. At the middle school, I want to give a shout-out to Rachel Matthews. She is in the PE department and does an exceptional job of teaching, but we've been spending our last couple SIP days in the PE departments looking at the updated mandated units that the state has set forth and all of the requirements. And while, you know, science, social studies had a one-page or a two-page, the PE department actually had 14 pages of updates to their state mandated units, and so, they've been doing a great job. And Rachel has done a great job at the middle school, kind of keeping that department together, coming up with ideas and sharing them with administration on how we can get those to work. And then, at the high school, Scott Jermaine, again, did not realize that he was the high school spotlight person until Amanda and I had just talked earlier this week, but Amanda was kind of that spearhead person at the high school in the PE department. When she left, there was obviously a big void to fill, and Scott not only has stepped up and kind of taken that lead, but like Amanda said, he is willing to do anything for anyone. Went over to see high school, the homecoming games, and he was right in the middle, leading it all on the mic, getting things set up, ready to go, moving it around. Anytime anybody asks or needs anything, he's always right there to help do that, so really appreciate that. And then, as far as what else is going on, the state has, I guess, not temporarily, but hesitantly released the school designations. They are under embargo until October 30th, and not only have they, they were released, then they were all redacted because they were wrong, then they were released again. Chris and I have both heard from multiple people that they are changing, so don't get too set in it. I will say, though, that we have already started diving very deep into the data that there is, with some hopes that the state has some errors in some places to our favor, but at least just getting in and seeing where we at with this data that they're right now giving us, and start setting some goals and some growth expectations, which is then also leading into some professional development. We've been spending a lot of time already this year, like I said, the elementary teachers are working on that Horton-Gillingham reading instruction, that we've been looking at mandated units, we've been looking at our power and priority standards, again, really making sure that we're focused in on what is essential to be taught. I don't know if you realize, but our state standards, if you broke them all apart and taught them, there's 15,000 hours worth of instruction that needs to happen to cover all of the standards, and in a typical school year, if you don't take out the days for homecoming games or Christmas parties or anything like that, we only have 9,000 hours of instruction. So, there's a lot to figure out, what's the priority and what's the utmost importance to get taught with our students, so we've been doing that. We also, though, have started, Chris and I had a conversation about, we've been building up our PD for our teachers, but it's also time to build up the PD for our administrators, and so, we're slowly getting into that because we want strong teachers and strong administrators for the benefit of our students in this district, so we're starting to work on that as well. And then, parent-teacher conferences are going on right now, Tuesday night and next Friday morning. Just thrilled with as many people that we've had sign up. Very glad to see the number of teachers that reached out to parents before we even set it up live, so it's been great, and hopefully, they are going well right now. And that's all I have, unless you have a question.
All right, thank you, Alyssa. All right, now, we'll move on to our superintendent reports.
I'm going to be short. We've got projects, and we're going to be talking about a lot of the stuff that I've been doing tonight. I am getting the tax levy ready for you all to do the initial approval next month, but our tax rate is looking good. I believe it's just under 4% right now. The EAV keeps moving into nice directions that helps us keep that rate down. I'm going to echo what Alyssa's been saying about all the PD. We consider ourselves lifelong learners, and we are always getting better, and it's really, this last half-day, I was trying to find my sanity, and so, I went into one of the rooms while they were, while they were working, and I watched a bunch of the teachers here in Parkview. There's no other way to say it, they were just absolutely nerding out about early literacy and the rules with the consonant, vowel consonant, and what sound comes from, I mean, just the science of reading, and I was just sitting there in awe, and it was really just very cool. So, I am glad that that OG training's coming. We've got that resource in Ms. Hall at Waterloo that's a national trainer, and so, it's just, it's a really good program, and I'm looking forward to seeing where it's going to pay off. But that's the teacher's PD, the administrative PD, because we're all learning every time, is also of importance, and so, it's good stuff.
That's it?
That's pretty much it.
All right, perfect. We'll take it. All right, go right into our items for action. First one is the approval of the 2023 annual financial report.
Yeah, and this kind of goes along with that lifelong learning. A good audit is like a, going to the doctor, you know? You get a checkup, and they tell you what to do right. Our FY '23 had no, no issues, no problems with the financials. However, during that year, while we transitioned over our financial software, we realized that there are some weaknesses in our controls, and so, last month, we had our presentation of the financials. Ms. Corey and I sat down with Mr. Schmerzels and went into great detail on how we could improve and ensure that some things that had happened in the past can't happen again. You've got a copy of the summary of the auditor's results, and again, these are recommendations that are really for, just to ensure that we're all reminded that we can always be better, we can always do more, and find your solutions, but with this last little part about the findings, you'll see that the criteria, the conditions, the cause, there was really just this one finding, and again, it was not from something that happened this year, but from something that we found this year that we wanted to make sure we took very, very seriously. With that said, I would recommend that the, that the board approve the annual financial report. Mrs. Corey, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you've summed it up. I agree.
Great. Any questions, comments, concerns? Would it be like to make a motion to approve the 2023 annual financial report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrea, give her a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyson, roll call, please.
Andrew Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Surge?
Yes.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
All right, unanimous approval, and we'll go on to item B, which is approval of the bid for the parking lot project.
And you've got this letter here from FGM. You'll see that we had two bidders, KRB Excavating and DMS Contracting, and this is for the parking lot that would be up at the city park, and the recommendation is to go with the base bid. We did do an alternate that would add a little extra sidewalk, and the city was looking at whether or not they would want to tag on that alternate, but I talked with Mr. Brim today, and they will be doing that at a later date, and so, the recommendation is for us to do the base bid, and that would be awarded to KRB Excavating, and the base bid would be awarded at $417,445. They were the lowest and the most responsive, or they are a responsive bidder, so...
All right, Anna, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add. The only, I guess, question I have is, in the recommendation letter from FGMA, it says that they had, KRB, I guess, had noted that flooring and some light fixtures are concerns for lead times. I don't understand why there's no flooring in this project.
Right.
And what light fixtures, because isn't Ameren providing the, maybe lighting for the stairs? Could you get some clarity on what light fixtures and why flooring is a concern when there is no flooring in the scope of this contract for this effort?
Okay, I will look into that, get clarification back to you, but I would still recommend the base bid.
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion to approve them as the contractor.
How about, let me make a suggestion on the motion you're about to propose. How about if, if you make a motion to accept a base bid, as long as it doesn't include overages for lighting or flooring, since we have...
Well, it was only for schedule, was the only concern, that's why it wasn't really...
Okay.
The only concern after their schedule was with flooring and lighting.
Okay, I didn't know if that was part of the contingent or not, so...
No.
All right, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. So, you're saying?
No, I was just saying, I would make a motion to approve them as the recommended offer, or to select KRB as our contractor.
Perfect, all right. We have a motion, give her a second.
I'll second.
All right, Kelly, out there. A roll call, please.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Surge?
Yes.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
Andrew Corey?
Yes.
Perfect, we have a new parking lot. Congratulations, everyone involved. All right.
I don't know when that's going to start.
I would ask for that schedule to be shared with the board, though.
Okay.
I think it's pretty much ready to go, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just a matter of temperatures and time, so I will notify FGM tomorrow, get clarification on the flooring and the lights, but ultimately, look for the schedule and see when we can get that, so they will, we'll pending the vote.
Yeah.
Did it start tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, they didn't have any, like, because when they came to, for the bid opening, they didn't express any concerns with the desired completion date, so that's why I'm not so concerned with what, with the details of the schedule, because the completion day we wanted was by April, I believe.
Yeah.
And so, they, you know, obviously, their schedule includes a completion date of that, but when they're starting, when they plan on doing, you know, ripping up the existing road, stuff like that, is, I think, is just be, good for us to know so that we can start coordinating with the city and anyone using the park, et cetera, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
The parking lots full tonight with people with, the youngsters playing football, so...
That's a good addition. All right, perfect. We'll move on to our discussion items. We'll start off with the facility study.
We met today with Petker and FGM regarding the high school project. We are going to be meeting every other Thursday, so our next meeting's November 2nd. We do have a homework assignment. Mr. Hemken, Mr. Myers, and I, along with Kim Pollak from Cobalt, are going to be meeting with Brian Reeves and Amanda Bedard next week, Tuesday, I believe, to put the base plans and start making sure that every teacher's got a room, and how many rooms do we have? What do we need? Getting some of that granular details. This process of adding on and this kind of project is rather new to me, and the idea of getting the big picture and then going down to the details to then go back to make sure the big picture, to then go back to the, it's, it's interesting, but we will be moving ahead, and every two weeks, we'll be having homework assignments and start moving forward. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Hemken, from the meeting today?
No, I think right now, basically, where the meeting we had today was, like Chris said, it was just a preliminary, here's, here's a swag of, here's everything you wanted, and here's, you know, a little bit more detail as far as a design and some options, so we discussed them giving us different options for the auditorium, for the gym, for the classroom spaces, as far as, okay, if you did a full build out of everything, you know, like the auditorium, for example, all lighting, all curtains, all sound materials, you know, sound deadening materials, whatever, give us everything outfitted, give us the base shell, or, you know, they, some of it they call white boxing, and give us an option in between so that we can make some cost trade-offs, you know, along the way to make sure that we are budget-conscious and responsible. So, that's part of the process of where we'll be going over the next couple of meetings, is working through, okay, here's three different pricing options for each of these spaces. What are we going to get, or, you know, maybe not three options, maybe five, maybe two, whatever, but here are some alternate options or decision points, based on how, how much you want to outfit now, what we can do for later. You know, all the classrooms won't be immediately used, we recognize that, so us just having those discussions and then looking at what we can do later, as far as renovations that are, have the most impact and which ones would have little impact, so a lot of that trade-off discussion, that's kind of, we started setting the groundwork for it. We haven't actually started the trade-off decisions, but setting the groundwork to get the information so that we can make informed trade-off decisions, because, I mean, that's the name of the game with this. It's not, hey, here's everything we want, we're going to get everything we want. It's how do we make trade-offs along the way that are the right decisions, so...
And still leave opportunities for future projects as money's become available to be able to get some of those things that we had to not get this time.
Right.
So, it's been a very, a good process, you know, and with every step, they, they start refining their numbers, and so... But by the next meeting, we will have more details.
Perfect. Any questions? All right, going on to our, item B is the IASB Resolutions First Reading. Fortunately, this is not as many as we had in the past, so, very fortunate.
Yeah, and so, what we do here is typically just bring it to your attention. Next month, we will actually go through each item, and please come with any questions, email me any questions you have on them or concerns you have on them, and, because Mr. Surge will be taking diligent... Search will be taking diligent notes next month because he'll be going to the IAS, the joint conference, they call it now, and casting your votes for the board.
Perfect. All right. On to...
When will the meeting, are we moving it up next month?
Yeah, it'll be Wednesday. So it is...
So we're just moving in a day? We're not going up a whole week?
Yeah, no, it's just the day. So when we set the agendas or the board meetings, that was one of them that we moved. And so we did it the Wednesday, then we'll travel up the next day.
Those resolutions are also available, the public books look at them, are available on our new website, if you haven't checked it out yet. But they are there in case anybody wants to look at them.
Excellent point. Perfect. Thank you. Good plug.
And our new website is hopefully more user-friendly. I think it, I like it, but.
All right. Any other questions on the resolutions? Go on to individual board member comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I just wanted to give a shout-out, thank you, to the high school volleyball team and the coaches. Last month, they participated in my suicide walk that I do every year on Assange the Soldiers' Weekend, and they kind of did it as their little warm-up before practice, and they also did a collection of some funds at one of their games and donated that to the Suicide Foundation.
Nice. Anyone else? That's hard to follow, Lisa. All right. Board member program, I don't have anything this evening, and we did have a spot for an executive session, but I don't think there's a necessity for one, so we will forego that. Therefore, there'll be no action items following the non-existent executive session. The only thing left to do is adjourn. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do your second.
I'll second.
Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect.